Well, welcome everyone to the City Council Candidate Forum, brought to you by the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce. I'm Peter Katz, the CEO of the Chamber. I want to thank all of you and I want to especially thank all of our candidates for participating. Welcome. We've prepared questions based on feedback from the Chamber members and from their questions submitted during registration. The focus of this particular forum is on topics most important to running their businesses and improving the climate for economic growth. Please note that with nine candidates in the 90-minute forum, time will be tight and will be strictly managed. You'll see that we do have a timer set up and we will be watching that as we go. All candidates will answer each question and will be called on in alphabetical order first, and then for the next question, reverse alphabetical order, and then alphabetical order again, just to mix things up a little bit. Depending on time, we'll also include questions from the audience and/or a quick summary statement at the end. Please, a box at question. Again, questions, business related. Please note, we may not get to all of them, but we will submit them to the candidates afterwards for them to answer at their discretion. We also encourage you to view other forums that may have a deeper focus on your particular issue. Just a reminder, the forum is being recorded and will be available to the public for future viewing. With that, I'd like to introduce Sarah Astles, our moderator and also the president of the Downtown Association and owner of Opal. Sarah?
Thank you, Peter, and thank you to our candidates and to our viewers. I see the participants piling in and thank you to our viewers watching the recording later. The great thing about this doing it early is we have a lot of time to review it among our community before the elections. Okay, and with that, we're not going to waste any time. We're going to jump right into introduction statements. So candidates, tell us what makes you special for this role? We're going to give each of you a minute and a half. We're going to start in alphabetical order with Mayor Margaret A. Koga. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you to the Chamber for having this forum. My name is Margaret A. Koga. I'm the current mayor for the city of Mountain View, and I've had the honor of serving on the City Council for 12 of the last 14 years. As mayor this year during this pandemic and that nationwide civil unrest, I've worked hard to successfully respond to our community's concerns and needs. Working together with my colleagues, staff, other public, private, and nonprofit partners, I initiated the largest rent relief program in the county, a small business resiliency program, opened safe parking lots for vehicle dwellers, enhanced food hygiene and safety assistance for homeless, low-income families, brought COVID testing to Mountain View, opened Castro Street's outdoor dining, and fostered community dialogue around diversity while working to ensure equitable and inclusive city services delivery. We now need to work together to rebuild our community. As mayor in 2009, I led the city out of the Great Recession and helped develop Mountain View to be the great place it is by implementing innovative approaches to addressing housing, transportation, and climate change. I championed safe and strong neighborhoods, added parks, improved infrastructure, expanded city services, and partnered with our schools. And my fiscal prudence and work on innovative revenue generation in the past decade directly contributed to a balanced city budget this year with no cuts. My leadership experience, especially during crisis and extensive record of results, makes me the right person to continue to serve on the City Council at this critical time. I ask for your support once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And next we have Jose Quinteros.
Hey, how's it going, everyone? This is Jose. Thank you, Chamber, for supporting this event. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to reach out to the membership as well as the greater community as a whole. I'm a part of the Mountain View Winston School Board, been there since 2015, was appointed then, ran into 2016, and was successful. I'm now serving a four-year term. During that period of time, I don't know if many of you remember, but the school board was a riot. There was not much of an ability to be able to agree to disagree. The professionalism on it, up to a point, was a challenge. Once I got onto the board, we were able to remedy that, working as a team, by being able to recognize that difference of opinion is an opportunity for change. And by doing that, I look at myself as the consensus builder, someone that can bridge the gap. And I think right now, more than ever, we need to look at our city as being in a crossroad. So not only looking at it from the COVID-19 perspective with the economic situation, but also in terms of trying to figure out what the needs are for our small businesses and what we can do to improve the application process so that fees are reduced. At the same time, we also have to figure out the needs of the community. And so to do that, you have to bridge the gap in communication, do more outreach, get more feedback, but work together as a team to figure out what the goals are so that we can work together to achieve that. And that goes step by step, but only through the willingness of the candidates here to be able to make a difference and to listen to one another and to the community, can we be that difference. Hopefully, I'll be able to earn your support in the end, and I'm always open to questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. John Lashley?
Members of the Chamber of Commerce, first, thank you for inviting me to participate today in your candidate forum. My name is John Lashley. I'm a proud young Democrat and a data scientist at LinkedIn. I'm proud to be an activist for housing and social justice in Mountain View as well since 2016. This city council race is very personal for me. I'm a renter and a worker in Mountain View myself. I feel as though the city council does not represent me as a renter and just an everyday worker, but I will do more to represent people like me in Mountain View. I'm running a socially progressive and fiscally prudent campaign. I have a plan for what I've identified as each of our big challenges. Firstly, I will listen and act on the needs of the business community and the residents by promoting public forums, hearings, and participatory budgeting. And in order to fund a pandemic recovery that works for small business and residents, I will promote corporate taxation on our large corporations in Mountain View, building on the success of our business licensing tax. If I win, I pledge to work with you as a city council member to enact a fiscally prudent and socially progressive campaign, or sorry, policies. We may not agree on every ballot measure and ordinance, but you will know that I will listen and act on your input. For this reason, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next we have Sally Leber.
Thank you so much. Well, I want to first start by thanking the Chamber and Peter and his staff for putting this together. You know, a lot of work goes into putting on one of these forums and to presenting the information to the voters. So thank you so much for doing that. And thank you to everyone who's engaging in this today. Rather than talking about what's special about myself, I'd like to talk about what's special about Mountain View. I think for everybody here, whether or not you are originally from Mountain View, it is our adopted hometown. And it's really a special and unique, sorry, the smoke is starting to get to me a little bit today. It really is a special and unique community. We have a wonderfully strong community of volunteerism and community involvement. We have an excellent city staff. We are very blessed in where we're physically located, and we have a vibrant business community. And I think that we need to work to keep it that way. I would like to see our inclusion strengthened in terms of participation. I'm very thankful and proud that our library staff recently reached out to so many small businesses in Mountain View. And I think that we can do more like that to make sure that we're all pulling in the same direction, especially at this very, very critical time. So thank you for everyone for participating.
Thank you, Sally. Next we have council member Lisa Matatchak.
Thank you. I appreciate you holding this forum today. It's always good to meet with our business community and discuss issues and hear concerns. After earning my MBA at UCLA, I moved to the Bay Area, and I've lived in Mountain View for about 20 years. I do work in the tech industry, and it's primarily in the cybersecurity industry, where I've worked for about 10 years. I was on the city's Environmental Planning Commission for seven years before being elected to the council, and the EPC has great experience since the, one of the most frequent topics the city council talks about is land use. And so seven years of land use experience has been put to good use. I'm running for reelection because I want to continue to work for great neighborhoods and a great quality of life in Mountain View. And a key aspect of that is having a thriving business community. I had the pleasure of working with the Chamber on a couple of issues in the past, such as the restructuring of the business license fee. And last year when I was mayor, got to tell you, one of the highlights for me was visiting our small businesses throughout our city. I went with the Chamber and our city's Economic Development Department. And I tell you, there is nothing like a conversation with a business owner about the issues they're facing and how the city can help. I have brought that information to the council at meetings. I would be honored to have your support, and I look forward to our discussion.
Thank you, Lisa. Alex Nunes.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, I guess, a little nervous too. Well, thanks again, everyone, for hopping on and being here. My name is Alex. Just like Sally, I find it a little difficult to speak a little bit about what's special about me, but I can definitely speak a little to my differentiators as a candidate. I think now more than ever, we need people in office who are, whose futures are literally on the front line of our multifaceted social and environmental crises. I am someone who, yes, as a young person, has still developed a record over years of getting down in with the Mountain View community, going into the trenches, and engaging the community to find solutions to our most pressing and critical challenges. This has mostly been with regards to housing, which is definitely a critical issue for many of our businesses, but it also pertains to environmentalism as we need to make sure that people are able to work closer to their jobs so that we can actually have an economy that is not just sustainable over the short term, but over the long term, because, right, if we don't have a planet, we don't have an economy. And fundamentally as well, making sure that we educate our workforce for the future so that we can have competitive businesses. So I am someone who is looking at the long-term sustainability of our community, of our society. That's my differentiator. If I earn your support, then I pledge that I will just as equally get down in the trenches with you and fight to solve the business community's most pressing challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Paul Relas.
Thank you. I agree with much of the sentiment that's been expressed. We have a beautiful community, a little less so on smoke-filled days, but we have great residents, good businesses, and strong fundamentals. What we don't have is a city hall that performs as well as the rest of our community. And so I'm running because I have a unique experience and unique outsider perspective that can help improve city hall's operations. I was the first elected as a college student at Purdue University. While I served on the West Lafayette, Indiana City Council, and we built good housing, we built a strong business community, and we helped make a community that worked better for everyone. And so that unique outsider perspective, that unique background of experience is what we need today. We don't need a city that's performed very, very slowly. For example, when RVs first lined our city streets four and a half, five years ago, the city council dug into it, but they didn't do anything. They debated, they mulled over it, they didn't act for four and a half years. When they did act, they delivered 30 parking spots for 600 unhoused. We see this sort of slow, methodical, non-action hurt our business community. We see permits take forever, planning take forever, the city to be very slow to respond when business needs to act and needs to move forward. We need that even more during this time of COVID recovery. And so we need a city that matches the pace and quality of our community, and we've had it for, not had it, for way too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next we have Pat Showalter.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name's Pat Showalter. I'm a 36-year resident of the city of Mountain View, and I served for nine years on the Planning Commission. As Lisa explained, it was quite an education. I was on council for four years and served as your mayor. I'm the only person who's running who's a civil engineer. And I think that that's really significant because my professional experience is directly applicable to many of the land use and infrastructure, water, road issues that come before the council on environmental issues in particular, come before the council all the time. But what I wanted to talk to you about really is the important synergy that there is between the business community and city government. I mean, when you think about it, the small businesses provide jobs, they provide services, they provide tax revenue that the city needs to keep going and be a great place. And the residents are the customers, and they need those services and jobs. So there's a tremendous amount of synergy, and we need to work together. That's been mentioned by another number of other candidates, and I don't really think it can be stressed enough. We don't exactly know what will be needed as we move forward. So we need to listen to each other about the suggestions. Yesterday at BIP, there was a wonderful description of the small business strategy, and I look forward to working on that. Thanks very much for having us.
Thank you, Pat. And last, we have Lenny Siegel. You're on mute, Lenny.
Here we go. Hear me now?
Yep.
So, working with my allies on the city council, city staff, and community activists, I compiled an impressive list of accomplishments in my four years on the city council. I shepherded passage of the North Bay Shore Plan for Mixed Use Complete Neighborhoods. Identified suitable sites for affordable housing projects. I helped community activists pass Measure V. I proposed safe parking for vehicle households at the Shoreline Amphitheater parking lot way back in 2015. I built support for car-free zones downtown. Proposed linkage of office developments to the housing. Revived hopes for a school and park in the San Antonio area, the coal site. Proposed a one passage of Measure P, a graduated tax on employers. Promoted cleanup of underground toxic some properties slated for development. Accelerated the reopening of Stevens Creek Trail after the washout. So I did a lot of stuff, a lot more, and I know others helped. One of my concerns, I get a chuckle out of it, is the incumbents in this election taking credit for things that they actually opposed or dragged their feet on. But the thing is, we aren't done. We've got a lot more to do. We've got to build the housing in North Bay Shore. We have to extend rent control to mobile homeowners. There's a lot left to do, and I can do that a lot better if you bring me back to the city council. And thank you for hosting this forum.
Thank you, Lenny, and thank you all for your introductions. We're going to move now into questions. As Peter mentioned, we obtain these questions from our businesses. The Chamber is made up of over 760 businesses, and we ask them, what's most important to you? What do you want to ask our candidates? No surprise, number one, COVID. COVID-19 has devastated many small businesses. I'm sitting in downtown right now, and you can see it out the window. What immediate support for the survival of small businesses do you think the city should offer? And what longer-term, sustainable solutions for health and growth do you propose? You can take two minutes to answer this question. We're going to go in reverse order and start with you, Lenny.
Lenny, you'll need to unmute again.
I was interrupted by a text. You wanted, the question's about COVID-19, right, and recovering from it.
Yes, yes. What do you think the city should offer, you know, for the survival of small businesses and also long-term, sustainable solutions?
So we're in a fortunate situation. Mountain View's budget is in relatively good shape compared to a lot of other cities. So the city is in a position to provide loans and assistance to small businesses as well as to residents. Not as much as we need. So we have to keep fighting with the federal government to see that money is provided to states and local governments. But the main thing now is to defeat the virus. If we don't defeat, you know, if we're still under lockdown several months from now, then a lot of businesses are going to go out of business. However, if we're able to do the kind of social distancing and contact tracing to make sure that we stay healthy and businesses can continue to, can operate again, then it will be easier to catch up. But it's not easy. This is unprecedented. We have a federal government that's not helping, a state government that's trying to help, but is dealing with conditions that are different all over the state. So again, the city hopefully will continue to provide assistance to small businesses and to homeowners and to tenants. We have to work on the health issues. But most of all, we have to fight for a federal response because none of the things that we do locally are going to be enough to save everyone in our community. So I'm done.
Thank you, Lenny. Pat?
Well, there's a couple of things I think that the city can do. First, frankly, I think the city's done a great job of the COVID response. I'm really proud of it. But of course, that doesn't mean we're done. I think this local business strategy that's being worked on is going to be very valuable. There are a couple of takeaways from that. One is that our local businesses need customers. They need us to go and buy dinners and buy goods and just, you know, make sure that they have some business. So the city can be a cheerleader for that. The city, you know, we can help to get the word out that that's going on. I think another thing that we can do is we can provide, we can actually serve as that customer. I mean, the city buys a lot of things over time, and the more that we can buy them locally, the better off. I know one of the things that the city used to do was always buy dinners for the city council from local restaurants. Well, I don't think they're having dinners delivered to the city council members' house. I honestly don't know, but still, the principle is a good principle. I think another thing that we can do is just kind of relax some of the regulatory regulations. We need to make the regulations that we have make sense to the current situation. We should allow people to operate as long as it's safe. And I think for instance, right now, most businesses aren't allowed to, or wouldn't have been allowed to operate on the sidewalk. Well, let's let them do it now because that's much safer for everybody, and there isn't enough, there isn't as much car traffic. And I think we can, you know, we can be much more relaxed about some of these things if they're safe. Then another thing I think is we want to encourage things that create a sense of place, like maybe some pop-ups downtown.
Thank you, Pat. Paul, you're up next.
Thank you. There's two phases to COVID. Certainly getting through this period and stemming the spread of it, and then the recovery. And in both, we've seen the city lack and leave a lot of its response up to the county. For months and months, the city didn't do anything. It was very quiet on the issue, leaving the response entirely up to the county. And we know our city has special needs and special challenges, and the city has enormous resources that it could have been applying to help spread the flow of COVID locally. And so certainly, we just need more competence and a faster response in that area. Let's be specific on that. The city, once it was approved that restaurants could dine outside in our area, the city took another two weeks to enable that. Instead, they should have been preparing ahead of time, knowing that that eventuality was going to come up, communicating that that was going to come up, should have been ready day one. More details on that. The city spent a lot of money and time planning some circles to be painted, have some spread of distancing. Everyone ignores them. Every business along Castro ignores them. They're completely unutilized today. Massive waste of resources, time, energy, staff, and the city. Instead, they could be focusing on making sure we have testing in downtown Mountain View every single day, not just every other Friday or a site that closes when it gets a little too hazy out. We need testing and resources, mass distribution in our city, and the city has the resources to do that. They just failed to do that and do so quickly. Once we get past the spread of COVID, we need to think about recovery, and we need to be thinking about that now. And so the city's in a strong position to do a lot there, to help our local businesses. And it has a very strong balance sheet, a AAA credit rating. We can do a lot to help our businesses get through this period with innovative plans and policies to make sure we don't lose a lot of the small businesses that are very important for a welcoming, great downtown and a strong business community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Alex?
Awesome. Thanks a lot for the question. So I also look at, and everyone who runs a business looks at, so balance sheets, right? You've got your costs, you've got your revenues or incomes. And so those are the two levers we can play with here. As far as the cost side of things go, right now, you know, I'm sure everyone recalls what was going on with flights and that battle with their landlord and how, yeah, how hairy it got. I think that along with our residents, we need to make sure that we disallow eviction. We take every step possible to disallow eviction as an allowable civil remedy for the failure of non-payment due to, you know, COVID-19 economic impacts. I think we need to convert that into consumer debt and have it amortized over a long period of time. Fundamentally, though, we also need to make sure that we are deploying our relief funding in a progressive manner. You know, right now, we, in Ball Accounts, have the largest rent relief program in the county, but who's getting that money? Is it Prometheus? Is it Todd Speaker? Is it these large, you know, corporate landlords who will be fine no matter what? I think we need to make sure that we are much more targeted and precise with who's getting our precious money and make sure that we're all collectively sacrificing in the most methodical and progressive manner. As far as the revenue side goes, I fully agree with Pat. I think that we need to allow more flexibility. If you can run your open-air yoga studio outside when the smoke clears out, let's do that. I think we need to make sure that we provide that kind of creativity as well to give a little bit more zest to the customer experience. And additionally, I think we need to really make sure we, credit, where credit's due, Castro Streets has been a wonderful experience as a customer as well. I applaud the council for that. I think that we need to make sure that it's not just seasonal. I think we need to make sure we invest in heat lamps to make sure that we can carry this through to the winter. And then at the end of the day, also invest in entrepreneurial programs to refill the vacant spots for the businesses that unfortunately did go under so we don't have a chain of closures just standing there. So thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Lisa?
Thank you. I think COVID is going to be with us for a while, and recovery from COVID is going to be with us for even longer. I think it's really important, as your question was, short term and long term. Short term, I think the city has tried to be responsive to the ever-changing health orders from both the state and the county, and trying to maneuver through those to provide help where we can and be flexible and move quickly. On Tuesday, we just updated our resolutions, and we are permitting businesses to operate outside. We've dramatically shortened the permitting time and the permitting requirements, which I think is great. I think short term, as I said at the meeting, we need to be flexible and fast. And we need our business community to tell us what specifically they need or want, what will work for them and what won't work for them. The business community is, you know, the base of experts that can bring this forward to us. I do recognize that different businesses will have different requirements, and so it is important to hear from all of them. If you're operating a gym and now you're outside versus, you know, a restaurant versus you have goods, you know, we do need to be flexible and hear what will work and what won't work for you. But I appreciate that we just extended the flexibility and the ability to do business in a different way through the end of the state of the emergency, which could be a while from now. Longer term, I think we are hiring an economic development manager with the city, and that would be the key person to work with. Because again, we need to hear from the businesses, but some of the things that have been mentioned, financial help, reduction in fees, I think we need to explore all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Sally?
Thank you so much. Well, I agree with various parts of what everyone has said. And I'm very thankful for the efforts that have been made by the city so far. I do see some opportunities to need to tweak them a little bit going forward because I think that we didn't realize that we were going to be in this predicament. And that's something that I've really found in my government service as well. You never know what circumstances you'll be facing. And I think as we go forward, we have to look at how we can best serve the retail stores on Castro Street as well as the restaurants. And I know that going into the closed-off area of Castro Street is maybe more accessible and appealing to people that are younger, but a lot of the revenue for businesses comes from people that are a little bit older. And so looking at how can we really extend the accessibility of that and do it in a socially distant way, and as Lisa said, being very responsive to the changing orders that are coming from the county. And I think that we may need to pursue some of the strategies that were used in Santa Cruz after the earthquake there of providing places that are flexible, that businesses can locate temporarily, maybe an extension onto the farmer's market to allow for sales. And I do feel that as we go forward... And and I do feel that as we go forward, um, that we should use more of the flexible zones on Castro Street and reopen the street itself so that people can see that businesses are in fact open. And we do require less parking at this time, but that ability to see that the bookstore and that uh East West and other businesses are in fact open, uh, I think is very, very important to getting customers in. And that's really what it's all about, is the inflow.
Thank you, Sally. John?
Thank you. Yes, so I'll talk about, you know, business operations as well as how we finance this in the short and long term. Um, so first off, I want to say the city council made the correct decision on Tuesday, and I applaud them for it, for giving the the COVID response the flexibility it needs. Because each each week presents a new social health order. Each week presents a new weather impact outside, whether it's smoke or heat or what have you. And that flexibility is necessary for our program to succeed for our businesses in Mountain View. I will support that going forward, um, to leave the control of the correct business operation rules in the hands of the city manager and the city staff. So I support that. Uh, in addition, uh, we have to react to the changing weather and seasons. Uh, for example, by providing shelters, tents, heaters to allow businesses to continue operating outside in general as a rule. Um, and I would support the, excuse me, I would support the direct provision of those materials, the tents, heaters, et cetera. The city can, um, like, I agree with something the former mayor, Mr. Walter, said. The city can provide direct provision of aid by purchasing local food assistance, medical assistance to people who are at risk of leaving their homes, which provides demand for um our local businesses. Uh, finally, the question is, how do we pay for any COVID response? Uh, the analysis is very important here. We have asked our workers and residents of Mountain View to sacrifice by uh not entering the labor market, staying home. Some can telecommute, but many are not able to work for their livelihood. Many of our small businesses have shuttered or at or are at reduced capacity right now. My philosophy is it's time to ask our large corporations to make a sacrifice. I support taxing our large corporations who are continuing in operations, such as Google, Microsoft, et cetera, to fund a support system for our small businesses and residents. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Jose?
Thank you. So Lisa mentioned this beforehand, and I think this is the the starter point. We need to go back and check in with our small business. We need to find out what's been working and what hasn't and what it is that they need now after a time of being shut down and open a little bit uh to reassess. And I think right now, if we do that, then we can find out for sure. Are we hitting the spots that need to be covered or are we not? And if we're not, then we need to develop a plan to make sure that happens. Um, but other than that, I also think that we need to recruit new businesses to the local economy. And if I'm a restaurant owner and I'd like to open a shop in Mountain View, I don't think it would help me to pay upfront over a hundred thousand in parking fees. I think right now, because of COVID nineteen, we need to be more mindful of that aspect of business. That money can go towards salary or benefits. And at the end of the year, we can reassess then whether or not it's needed or if it should be scaled back to a percentage. No one's talked about that. I think that's key because I think that helps our small businesses to make an even bigger impact within the local economy. Um, the other thing, though, is uh instead of taxing corporations, because we know how that would work, uh, and and they're facing a split ballot initiative right now as it is with property taxes, we need to do what we've done in the Mountain View Wisman School District. We had a need to be able to partner up with Google and other entities. We did so, and we were able to meet the needs of being able to provide one laptop per child in our district. Partnerships are the key right now in moving forward in small business especially. If we can have buy-in from the larger corporations to be able to pitch in for a small relief fund, that would be awesome. Uh, it would help out with the community building aspect of what they can provide to us and what we provide to them, which is an opportunity to succeed in business and also be members of the community here in Mountain View. Uh, but it's a give-and-take relationship. Uh, so you have to be open to those types of ideas and you have to have a buy-in from the community and from the city council to take that issue on and address that with them to make something happen. Um, so having said that, um, I also think that, um, I'm running out of time, touch on it. Uh, why not also move over the farmer's market down to Castro again on Sundays or Saturdays? That would also expand businesses as well, business opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. And to wrap up this question, we have Margaret.
Thank you for this question. And I, a lot has been said, but I appreciate going last because um this year as mayor during this pandemic has definitely been a extraordinary, um, indescribable experience. And as mayor, um, oftentimes as mayor, you you have a few special powers, um, but not really. It's more ceremonial. This year has been completely different. And as soon as we received, got the sheltering in place order, um, we started to receive emails and calls. I got personal calls from businesses, you know, asking us for help. And we also have a very, um, you know, new staff. Um, our city manager was five days on the job when sheltering in place went into effect. So I really um had to take a a hands-on approach to all of this. And I'm really proud of what we've been able to do. And I would say that we've actually moved very quickly. Within days and weeks, we implemented the rent relief program. Uh, Google had contacted me about it, the million-dollar grant they were offering to the community uh in the place of their I O conference. And I worked with them to start the Small Business Resiliency Fund that provides microloans. And we did the microloans, which will be, which are eventually forgivable because we wanted to allow the flexibility to use those loans in any way the business needed to. And I think that's really been the key to all of this, is being flexible. As mentioned, these orders change almost every day and we're having to try to monitor that, working with the chamber, uh, and to adjust accordingly. It's not easy to just close Castro Street. There were ten departments that had to deal with that. We had to talk to VTA about their bus routes. So there's, um, and, you know, Public Works and Fire. There's a lot that goes into all of this and we moved, I believe, we moved very quickly. And moving forward, um, I've asked staff to look at how we can continue the Small Business Fund. Um, the call center, we will do another round of the calls. I look forward to the Small Business Strategy Action Plan, which is something that I've also called for. And again, flexibility and listening to our businesses to see what they need and adjusting accordingly. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, question number two. We can't have a city council forum without everybody's favorite question, something about housing. This is a business forum, but a healthy business community also requires appropriate housing offerings for all residents. What are your plans to create a supply of available and affordable housing? This time, we're going to go A to Z. I want to start with you, Margaret.
I'm going to first or last, I guess, today. Um, so as a community.
You have one minute for this question, sorry.
Okay, um, so I'm very proud of our community. We've been a leader in housing, um, and especially with affordable housing. Um, I've been a big proponent. I've always supported every affordable housing project that comes, has come in front of me. Um, we've increased our BMR, Below Market Rate Unit count, from about five hundred when I first started on council to close to twenty-five hundred that built and in the pipeline. Um, so, and we've had, uh, we've increased our inclusionary zoning requirement from ten to fifteen percent. And we now require the units to be built. We have goals in certain precise plan areas to go up to twenty percent. I'm excited with Google project that they just proposed in uh East Wisman that will actually exceed those um those requirements. And so um I think that's a key. I'm also excited, we just got word that we got received some uh grant funding to do this modular program for transitional housing. And I think that's what we need to do, is look at innovative approaches to building housing quicker and more cost-effectively.
Thank you, Mayor. Jose?
Thank you. I agree with what uh Honorable Mayor Margaret Calgat just mentioned, but I'd also like to build off of that and try and be bold. And I know that there's not much uh room right now to be able to make new decisive uh uh changes in 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 the private sector, especially when you're not a developer yourself like me. I'm a renter, right? Uh, I'm a member of the school board and a father of two amazing young girls. But I also realize that the market for apartment luxury rental complexes may not be something that the private sector or the private developers may look at as a future potential. Uh, a lot of uh tech workers have been moving out from those residences. So I'd like to be able to explore the encouraging of looking into the market of providing complexes geared towards um young uh working-class folks along with the missing middle. I I think that's a potential for us to be able to make a dent in in affordable housing as well. And and any community benefit that comes from these projects, I'd also like to see that we can build uh and have satellite library branches because I think that's one way to keep that community that's coming online uh active in understanding their relationship with the city and that we care about them and their needs.
All right, John?
Thank you. Yes, I am a young working person in Mountain View, a renter myself as well. Um, and my answer will be twofold here again. Uh, we have to maintain our current affordable housing stock in terms of keeping our rents down. That's why I support a robust and maximal rent control policy to prevent displacement as we're densifying and building new transit-oriented communities. We increase the value of our land and that can cause rising rents and lead to displacement for working people. So is an integrated answer, supporting rent control, permitting new development. Uh, I I do live near the East Wisman area. It is my backyard and I do support the development in my backyard there, the kinds of which we're seeing on Log Avenue and from Google as well. Very, very optimistic about that. I support raising the inclusionary requirement on these developments. And like I said, I support transit-oriented development and integrated communities that can reduce carbon emissions at the same time as getting us out of our housing prices. So it's an integrated solution. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. Sally?
Thank you. I I really think that this is part and parcel of our COVID recovery and our economic recovery going forward. It's really clear that for many years, not enough housing has been built in the Bay Area. And we're really going through a gentrification crisis in Mountain View. Every day, we see community members who are pushed out. And I think that we need to put an emphasis on workforce housing and housing at every level. And um I'm very glad that the mayor mentioned uh the the small units to stabilize folks. And I hope that we can uh take a page out of Oakland's book rather than San Jose's book in that regard because the program was much more successful in Oakland in in uh providing a laddered approach to getting into housing. Um, I think that we should be doing more in terms of ADUs. And maybe we can look to uh the countywide program that's been used in Santa Cruz County for providing funding and providing qualified tenants uh for people that are willing to have an ADU.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you. So we have been working on housing and specifically affordable housing for a few years now. And um we have rezoned a lot of property throughout the city to enable more housing and also increased the requirements for affordable housing and promoted incentives for affordable housing. And I think we have also, um, as a result, incentivized some developers to build stacked flat condos, which are great entry points for people who want ownership housing. Um, we are um looking to have the units built. Uh, it's now a requirement rather than take the in lieu fee. Um, although, you know, there's consequences of that, then we have uh fewer funds to do some of the other things we used to do with that uh fin- that fund, those funds, sorry. Um, but um I think we've done quite a bit and um the state is also doing some things that are impacting our local market here. Thank you.
Alex?
All right, my key issue in sixty seconds. All right, uh, so number one, uh, housing affordability is important because if the workers of the small businesses can't afford to live here, then we don't have small businesses. Uh, number two, it's all about land use policies and controls, right? So right now, the state has done this really crazy miraculous thing where they passed SB three thirty in January, which stipulates that you must replace any rent-controlled or affordable units that were demolished as part of redevelopment. I think we need to make sure that we adopt a stringent no-net loss and anti-displacement policy for Mountain View locally such that any time development occurs, we're able to preserve our low and middle-skill workers by providing them with the means for developers to pay for the temporary housing while they move back and modifying our land use policies to allow for more density. That's going to then allow them to both replace the number of units that were lost and increase the density to a point where they can make the project pencil out. Um, additionally, I think we need to look at form-based zoning, uh, which the council has definitely been looking at already as a means to make sure that we can, within the envelopes of current lots, um, increase density without it being too objectionable to people's sensitivity. So that's what I think about housing.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. Well, on housing, it's clear that if you like what's going on in the community today, if you're happy with the price of housing and the situation with housing, go with the incumbents. They they're very proud of their work they're done. But to me, and to many in the community, it's very clear that that's not working. What they've been doing is failing us. We need some new approach. We need some fresh eyes on it. And we need to really attack this problem because it's critical to our community's health. And so what do we need to do? We need to move faster. We need to approve projects quicker because long approval processes drive up the cost of housing unnecessarily. We need to really attack the problem and build a plan to get to naturally affordable housing being built in our community. So this has been lots of different programs, lots of different plans, tweaks here and there. We need to get past that. We need to get to a point where the market is healthy locally and housing gets built on a routine basis that's available to everyone in our community. A lot of the small details are losing the sight of the the overall picture. We need the city to focus on solving the real problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Pat?
Well, um, I think it's important to bring up that housing is not just a local problem. In the Bay Area, we have underbuilt for about forty years. Mountain View has zoned aggressively for housing and is known for its um its record on producing housing. When I was on the EPC, I'm really proud that I was part of getting together our below-market rate ordinance. Um, that's developed fees that have led to the production of almost fourteen hundred affordable units and we have a thousand more in the pipeline. That is something to be proud of. That doesn't mean we should stop, but it's definitely something to be proud of. When I was the mayor, my favorite phrase was to talk about the perils of prosperity. Not enough housing and too much traffic. Now that I'm off council, I serve on the Alta Housing Board, which is an affordable housing um corporation that's been in business for fifty years. We need more housing and of course, we need to to build it faster. But um we've zoned aggressively and we should be proud of that.
Thank you. And to wrap up this question, Lenny?
When Pat, Ken Rosenberg and I took office in two thousand fifteen, Mountain View embarked on a strategy of building a lot of housing in mixed-use neighborhoods on previously commercial property. Mixed-use neighborhoods means housing, schools, parks, habitat, retail, and jobs. In addition, uh, through our inclusionary zoning policy that we adopted, if we build ten thousand units in North Bay Shore, we're going to build as many units of affordable housing as Mountain View has built in its entire history. But as Pat says, you can't sleep in a plan. We have to implement the North Bay Shore plan. We have to implement the East Wisman plan and recognize that both of those plans still call for a lot more jobs. So we have to have housing in the Terabella area and downtown. Instead of building offices downtown, let's build housing. Mountain View is a great place to build housing these days because who wants to live in the middle of wildfires where there are power shortages?
Thank you, Lenny, and thank you, everyone. This next one, you don't have to speed talk quite so much. You're going to have two minutes. We're going to do reverse order, so we're going to start with you, Lenny. And it's about design and planning. So with regards to city design and planning, what factors will you consider in approving new developments and in structuring new development fees? What considerations will be given to a purchase used in other cities? Lenny, we'll start with you.
Okay, well, well, first, on the design side, um, I mean, I was quoted in a newspaper saying if 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 fill in the air buildings, everything looks like a box. Uh, the city council or and particularly staff have a responsibility to make our our new housing places where people want to live and places that people want to walk by, places that people want to drive by. So a lot of the, a lot of good work has been done in our precise plans. Uh, but occasionally, the city council has to get involved, as we did on Villa Street, to say, hey, this doesn't look quite right. Uh, we need, again, buildings that people people want to live in. Secondly, uh, from the point of view of urban design, it's a ma- a matter of creating walkable, livable neighborhoods where people can walk out. And, you know, Jane Jacobs used to write about this in New York City, where you can step outside your apartment or your home and basically see almost everything you need and walk to it. Uh, this is a key part of urban design. It's a way to reduce traffic. It's a way to make places a lot more uh desirable to live in and a way of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. And finally, um, it, although there are some complaints about development fees, most of what Mountain View does is using the bonus floor area ratio where developers voluntarily pay extra to get greater density. That's a great strategy. It's threatened by state legislation for buy-ride housing. So that's one of the reasons I oppose Scott Wiener's legislation. But basically, we find that developers want to build here and But basically, we find that developers want to build here, and they want to provide more in exchange for being able to build greater density. That's been a great strategy, and we need to continue it if we can.
Thank you, Lenny. Pat?
Good question. What factors to consider in design? Well, I think that we always need to consider what will make a good community? What are all the components of a community? For many years, we've had the precise plan as kind of the bedrock of our planning, and that allows us to make tailored neighborhood plans. And it really, it just works beautifully. We need to continue with that. And in the plan, it has to include housing. It has to include schools. It has to include parks. It has to include good mobility, stormwater management, I mean, all sorts of things, good water, recycled water. But I think one of the things, one of the principles I always think is important to consider is that the city can control how well things are designed and how well things are built, and we need to do that. We do, I think we have a good system for doing that with the EPC and with the city council. But I also think it's gotten a little cumbersome. We have over 13 departments that get involved with planning, and it used to just take six months or a year to get a building from permitting to sort of construction. Now it often takes two or three years. We need to go back and look at that. Fees. I really think that we have a good set of fees. But in some cases, because things take so long, we need to consider when those fees are levied because the financing for a property is done at the beginning. And sometimes the fees are levied on what the property is worth at the end. And that can create real problems. So we need to be sensible about the fees and build it into the realistic system that developers have. But we need to do great things with them. Get parks, build schools, have wonderful roads, extend the Stevens Creek Trail. Thank you.
And next, we have Paul.
Thank you. When it comes to design, it's important that we have well-designed projects because they're going to exist in our community for a long time. But it's important that we do so with some urgency. And they're not contradictory. We can have well-designed process that's cheaper, that has more predictability into it by reforming the process. We can't stick to the current process. It's not working for anyone. And so what does that mean? We need to reduce, as Pat said, the amount of time it takes to approve these projects. This is good for driving down the cost of housing because a very, very long extended planning process drives up the cost unnecessarily. But it's also good for community feedback into the process. When a bad project comes along, it's very, very challenging for individuals in our community to resist it, to stay engaged in the process for years. That needs to be very short, and it needs to be appropriately short to get good projects done. And so, you know, we need a lot more urgency out of the planning department. We've seen a lot of poor leadership there. Probably need to see some staff changes there. But from the business community perspective, we need a lot more predictability about what's going to come out of it. Instead of having a dozen, as Pat said, thank you, departments involved in the process, we need to have one key point of contact that's making all the decisions and from the city side and involving city, you know, community input into that. And so a streamlined process, digging into the details of how the culture of the department changes, but also how the process changes. It's gritty details, but it's important details for delivering good, beautiful projects that are affordable to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
Yeah, so one thing that maybe a lot of people may not know about me is that I love design. And sometimes, to my detriment, I can hold things up because I don't like the way it looks. But obviously, with six other colleagues, I won't hold anything up on council should I be elected. But it's really important to me. One of the critical opportunities that we have for defining the character of our city, should Caltrain survive, and you know, that's a whole other issue, is the upcoming Transit Center. This will not only be the first impression that many of our visitors get of Mountain View, but it also would be a huge boon to our small businesses downtown if we can keep drawing people back. I think we need to make sure that we open up a, you know, RFP-type process for an outside designer to, outside designers to bid on the contract for the design of this Transit Center. And in times where we are not so budget-strained or need to be a little bit more conscious about our budget, I think that it does make sense to consider, I'm not sure if this is a position that we have in the city or not, and I definitely want to check this out, but consider hiring a full-time designer. You know, we do have a great DRC staff, Design or Development Review Committee. If you've ever been to one of those meetings, they talk about all types of stucco and wood, and it's actually really fascinating to see how they come to a pretty good design consensus. But, you know, we definitely need to make things more walkable, a lot more parapets, a lot more shade, a lot more trees, definitely a lot more, you know, closer feel. I think this is, you know, to the point of urgency. One of the specific ways that we can do that is, again, by adopting something like form-based zoning, which actually allows the community to come together and put blocks together of what kind of design they want to see in development moving forward. And once that's in place, you know, the plan just allows for development to speed on through. So I think that's a way to build consensus. And I also just want to say, if, you know, the chamber members really want a huge champion for design, council member Allison Hicks is fantastic. You could go to her today, and she will be a proud champion for design with you. So yeah, that's my answer.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you. So the city, when it comes to planning and design, we updated our general plan not too long ago. Well, actually, maybe it's been longer than I think, 2012. And then we've been working on the precise plans for the change areas that were identified. And these were identified with considerable public input. As we've worked through those precise plans, they've gotten, I would say, more complex because we are trying to pull the levers we have in order to meet the objectives we have. And the objectives we have are to increase housing, not make, you know, our jobs-housing balance worse, hoping to actually improve it, as well as having complete, really great neighborhoods. And in some areas, we need more levers to pull to make that happen than we do in other areas. When it comes to design, I really appreciate our DRC, as was mentioned. Although I will admit, my favorite architect recently retired from the DRC. And I think they've done a great job of raising the bar for development in Mountain View. And when it comes to the process itself, one of the things I appreciate about our new city manager is she's embarking on an effort that I think a couple of us on council have been putting forth for a while now to take a look at the internal processes of the city. And one of the departments is the planning department to see where we can change processes, streamline things, automate things. You know, COVID has forced the city to change a lot of things, and one is more things are moving online, which is great. But looking at that whole process, including fees, and I think one of the things we can look at there is, you know, how do our fees compare to those of nearby cities? And why are there differences? Thank you.
Thank you. Sally?
I want to highlight what someone mentioned about the critical importance of design and sustainability and livability. You know, Mountain View for many, many years has been recognized for our downtown because it does have a human scale, and it's an engaging space for people to come into. And I think that we have to constantly preserve that. And as Alex mentioned, look at the integration of transit and always keeping an eye towards the affordability of transit and the usability of transit that we're presenting. Some areas of the city that I think need some special emphasis would be El Camino and also looking at the integration of Moffett Boulevard into the downtown and how that can become a more vibrant commercial corridor for us. And I think that it's really important that Mountain View has a health element of our general plan. Not every city has that. And so the integration of public health principles into our planning. And as Lisa mentioned, really providing that workforce housing and looking at where it's located and how we can promote the livability and sustainability of our community. It's become very clear through COVID that we are on the brink of losing many of our essential workers. And so looking at how do we retain them, how do we retain the business community that's here and really present an engaging, pleasant atmosphere for folks to be able to come to.
Yeah. Sean?
Thank you. So I want to echo and agree with much of what has been said. I support the creation of economically sustainable and environmentally sustainable development. And for me, it's an issue of climate above all else. As a 32-year-old candidate, I will live through a lot of the worst of climate change. And so if I win, the decisions that I make on the city council will directly impact my life and the lives of many of my friends similar age in Mountain View toward the end of our life. So for that reason, it's paramount to me to analyze transit density, walkability, and an integrated commercial parks residential structure in new development. That will be my goal. At the same time, we have to acknowledge, you know, design is crucial, and it is important to create commerce and residential areas where people do want to live and do business. But we are in a housing crisis. So as a city council member, it will not be my priority to dictate to our EPC or, you know, any city department design standards. I will be a champion and support their decisions, but we do have to, quote unquote, move it along for our, especially our housing development, to get out of the housing crisis. On the subject of fees, I do support rationalizing fees, analyzing what other cities' fees are at, what level they're at, and asking ourselves why they might be different. And in general, I support taking the fees for the development of the public amenities in our communities, such as parks and transit especially. Thank you.
Jose?
Thank you. I enjoyed listening to the points that have been made by our previous members who have participated in running for city council right now. I agree mostly with what Lisa Manta has said. But I also want to look at it from this perspective in terms of designs, right? It's not a matter of dictating to the EPC or other groups or private developers what it is that I want and I need. Rather, it's more of an approach to use that as a bully pulpit to promote a cause or a look, a feel, so that a neighborhood does look and feel like a neighborhood. So that's why I look at it more as, let's encourage them to, when they do have a design project come along, let's see how that vision is. How does that fit into the neighborhood itself? How many trees do they have? What's the green space look like, right? And the compatibility with public transportation, it's a key issue. But also, let's look at bicycle ridership, especially now more than ever with COVID-19. It may promote more exercise that way. If we can have avenues of bicycle lanes connected between new online communities to a public school, for instance, that would be wonderful. If we can also have that tie into our trails, that would be even better because that would show an initiative to take care of our environment, but also the partnership between developers, the city, and the community. Because again, it's a vision. And developers are looking for that because they also want to make a profit. But the city has to look out for the community because we want the aesthetics to remain as what we think would be livable, attractive, and wise. That tension is always going to be there, no matter what. The question here is, how do we deal with it? How can we problem solve? And how can we encourage communication between the city, the community, and the developers to get something done that's more beneficial for the community as a whole? And that's always been the biggest challenge to capitalism. In terms of fees, because of COVID-19, I'm not a huge fan of trying to add on more fees, but it would be nice to find out what we stand with other members in our county area, to see where we're at and if a reexamination that has to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, on this question, Margaret?
A lot has been said already, and I do agree that city design and planning are really critical in creating a strong, well-thought-out community and strong neighborhoods that folks want to live and be a part of. And so design, planning is really the key to that. And I think that's what we've tried to do with the general plan update, as Lisa had mentioned. That was something that I championed back in 2007 when I was first elected. And it was a process that included community, extensive community input. We had hundreds of people come out for the visioning and the visioning process for that. And then this, I think there was, as a result, you know, investment by the community into that general plan update. Creating a community is more than just building buildings and building as many buildings as you can wherever. It's really about what's been talked about, connectivity, sustainability, and design, of course. And I know that, I know that we, the city in Mountain View, puts our developers, I'd say, through the wringer at times with design. But I think the results show that the benefit of that. And if you just dive down El Camino Real and you go through the different cities, I think you see the difference. And so I'm very proud of our, our design, DRC, and our staff for doing the work that they do to make sure we have well-thought-out, designed buildings. In terms of fees and processes, as Lisa mentioned, COVID has made us review our processes internally, and we will be undergoing some changes. We've already moved to paperless permitting. That was something that's been talked about for a while, and we finally got to it. And then fees, I think, you know, this has made our city fiscally sound. We do believe in cost recovery, not excessive fees, but making sure that we do get recovery for the work that's done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, for this next question, we're going to get into the permitting process. We're going to take a minute and a half to answer this question and go in alphabetical order. So we're going to start with you, Mayor. Here's the question. Many businesses have noted the difficulty of expanding their operations due to city regulations and the permitting process. What specific regulations would you reduce or eliminate? How might you streamline the process? Take a minute and a half. Margaret?
Thank you. This has been an ongoing conversation for many years since I've been on council. I discovered fairly early on that we've had some pretty arcane regulations, especially in our downtown area. And I know there was a time where there were just different concerns that I don't think apply now. So I've been calling for us to review our processes. Unfortunately, I have to say, you know, other, I just haven't had the most support from other colleagues who've had other priorities. And, you know, I know housing is important and transportation, but I do think economic development and working with our businesses is going to take front and center as we move through this COVID situation and a recession. So some of the issues, and I'll focus on downtown because they're most fresh in my mind, is the facade improvement requirement that if you want to switch from retail to restaurant, you are not only required to improve your facade of the building, but the entire building's facade. That is excessive. It's $250,000, maybe a half a million dollars. And for a small business trying to start out, that's quite excessive and pretty much a barrier to entry. We have parking fees for downtown, and I think we need to relook at that because those are quite high. And then flex use. So I know that there's some businesses want to be able to use their space for other uses as long as they're compatible and they are safe and don't have any health or safety risks. I think that's completely fine. So there's a lot that we can work on, and I look forward to doing that. Thanks.
Thank you. Jose?
I agree with what Margaret just mentioned right now. And it's time to be able to be on a city council where you have to reassess. And in one of these aspects of COVID-19, I know as a board member for the Mountain View Winston School District, we've had to actually sit down, like always, and try and problem solve in a way that's most rational and agreeable to the needs of the community that we serve, which is our students, our families, and members of the community as a whole. Because we're all integrated in the city of Mountain View. One way or another, we all share the same social space, and we have these needs. The small business community, though, for a long time, for whatever reason, the assessment of fees and the application process they have to go through hasn't been reassessed. And that's why I would work with Margaret to do just that, to work together to make these opportunities for small business more viable. That's why I brought up the issue about parking fees. I think if you have to pay that upfront, and if you're looking at just the facade improvement that Margaret had mentioned before, all that adds up. That money right now is so crucial to our small businesses because that, again, could lead to potential wages for employees and health benefits. And it also curtails our ability to be innovative and creative in a time when we need that more than, more now than ever. So we have to be prudent about that. But we have to be realistic. And right now is the time to be able to do that type of reassessment so that we can work together with the small business community and help them because the recession's already here, and it's only going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thanks. On the subject of regulations permitting innovation, I am an innovator, and I do support ration- On the subject of regulations permitting innovation, I, I am an innovator and I do support rationalizing our processes. Now is a time where it's crucially necessary for us to do it. Like I said earlier, during the pandemic, I support putting as much flexibility as possible in the hands of our city staff and city manager. Now is the time when we can discover, in terms of permitting and operations, what processes we can rationalize, what we can review. We can do that by, you know, raising these concerns, being good listeners to our business community, having public hearings and forums, which I pledge to do as a city council member, to find out what are the pain points of our business community right now. And when we do eventually return to public health and come out of the pandemic, then I do support, you know, permanently looking at changing these processes, these ordinances typically. So during a non-pandemic time, I do pledge to be a great listener for our business community and always amplify their grievances that they're having trouble with during the process. But right now especially, I support as much flexibility as we can have on this subject of making permits easier and business operations more flexible. Thanks.
Thank you. Sally?
Well, as I was listening to Margaret, I really, a flashback when you were talking about the facade improvements that businesses are required to do. At one point, when the bead store came into Castro Street, the city actually wanted the woman who owns it to rebuild the street in front of her business because it had previously been an auto repair garage. And so wanted her to rebuild the curves and do, do brickwork down the street and things like that. So it's really an evolving target. And I think that some of it does require council being involved in, in setting the priorities. I'm hopeful that when our new economic development manager comes on board, that that person has real focus on business retention. And, and not just recruitment, but retaining the businesses that we have and looking at small business needs as well as the needs of micro businesses and startups and emerging businesses. There have been a lot of glitches over time, particularly on the micro businesses, on the cottage foods industry. And that's an area that is really important to the immigrant population in Mountain View and to women getting to the next economic step. And I think that there are things that we could do there to provide meeting space, to help bridge getting through the county process successfully, and really making sure that everybody has a fair chance at, at doing business in Mountain View.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you. So there are so many things the city staff and the city council could be working on. It's always a question of priorities. And I would say now is the time to prioritize looking at this. And over the past four years, I've heard from some businesses about issues they've encountered. And I'm grateful that the city manager looked into those. It's kind of raised the visibility for me of, especially the area where there's a change of use in a building, where it seems like there's some issues we need to sort through. So I'm thankful again, you know, the city manager is open to taking a look at our processes. I think this is one of them. And I feel like we do need to understand from our business community, you know, more examples, more concrete information on what specifically are the areas so that we make sure, as we look at the whole process, we really look at those in particular. And I, I do want to make sure the economic development manager is focused on business retention and recovery from COVID. That's really the primary purpose, I'd say, for at least, you know, a few years, if not longer. And our business community is very important to the city, to our residents, actually to the region. We're kind of a, you know, regional draw here throughout the city. So we do need to focus on business recovery, business retention, and helping our, our small businesses especially. Thanks.
Thank you. Alex?
Yeah, so I guess I'll, I'll just first address the main premise of the question. That loosening regulations is, is the necessary step. I don't know that, and I'll, I'll admit to that. And the first thing I would definitely do is have a sit-down with you, Sarah, Peter, the chamber, and get the crash course 101 on what specifically are the regulations that are hampering or making life more difficult for our small businesses? Because for me, I believe that regulations are definitely a, a strong tool that the government can use to look out for, you know, the more vulnerable. And that doesn't just mean people, it means our businesses, right? It means fair competition. And so I would want to make sure that any regulations that we either loosen up or that we implement are going to help benefit the creation of many more diverse small businesses and, you know, entrepreneurial pursuits, you know, that, that add more vibrancy to our community. So that's number one. On the second front, you know, the current permitting process, you know, as far as I'm, I'm understanding it, you know, you know, we just modernized it in 2018 to help facilitate, you know, the production of more transit here in the city. So, you know, I would want to make sure that kind of continuing along those lines, any regulations that we either change or, you know, implement, that any kind of benefit that accrues out of that can directly be funneled, again, to the smaller businesses as was done with Measure P. So that is my answer for that.
Thank you, Alex. Paul?
Thank you. For a long time, we've seen local businesses succeed locally in spite of the city, not because the city's been an advocate or a partner for that success. And so we really need to change more than just the small detail here or there on the edge. We don't need little hindrances that blocked one business's percolating up to the council and then directing the address in it. We need real cultural change in the city so that the city is a partner for local business success. You know, too often, the problem with the regulation is not this rule or that rule. It's that the rules are capriciously applied, that there's no predictability, and the businesses get invested into a property, invested into a project, and the rules change from under them. Okay, let me be specific about this. I'm thinking specifically about a wood shop located in North Bay Shore area. It's been there for 10 years, very successful. City hires a new inspector, then the new inspector says this all has to be shut down tomorrow. You have to install sprinklers. Maybe sprinklers are the right way to go, but we don't need to kill a business, kill an operation just because a new city employee was hired. That's the capriciousness, that's the unpredictability that makes it very, very hard and challenging to run a successful business in Mountain View. And we're seeing the results of that. We're seeing very successful businesses like Cora decide we're permanently leaving town. This is enough. It's not, this is not a productive place for us to employ people. We're leaving. And so we see the results of a city that's failing our local businesses and not, has not been a productive partner and advocate for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Kat?
Okay, this is a tough question. What would you really do to streamline the process? Clearly, the people that are involved in the process want to do the best job they can and make it work as well as possible. I think that we need to make sure that from the top, from the city council, the policy comes down that we want the, we want the staff to be flexible and sensible. We want them to go with the spirit of the regulations and not necessarily the letter of the regulations. In other words, they should not be allergic to variances. There may be reasons why it's good to have a variance. I know I've had architects talk to me about how, given the way our planning is done and our regulations, they never will really be able to develop at the density that we want. In the sustainability, when we have this sustainability task force, one of the things that everybody recommended was that we, we evaluate our greenhouse gas emissions annually. Well, the process that our staff had been using took a long time to evaluate. I, I think it was almost a year to get the data together and evaluate it. So we got some help from Google, Google Fellows, and they came in and they worked onsite with us and provided that high-tech expertise. And I think that's the kind of thing we want to do with us. We want to have some synergy with the high-tech data management expertise we have here and apply it to our city government to streamline it.
Thank you. And finally, Lenny?
Thank you. Part of the problem is cultural. If somebody at the counter, the city counter, believes that rules and permits are simply there to tell people what they can't do, then you're going to have a lot of problems. The rules and regulations should also help tell people what they can do. When I was mayor, I spoke at a new employee orientation. I don't know about a 50 new employees, some of whom were counterfolks. And I talked about the Nashville waitress that used to be on National Public Radio. And when she had a problem getting permission to do something, she would ask the person behind the counter effectively, what would you do if you were in my situation? And I believe that we should train people who enforce permits, not just for businesses, but for homeowners, that their job is to help people figure out how they can do what they want to do within the rules. And I don't think that's the way things work right now. But even without changing the rules, we can make a lot of progress in helping people get things done. And this reminds me that, for this forum, I'm not just talking about businesses. The Chamber of Commerce in Mountain View isn't just a business organization. It's part and parcel of our community as a whole, lots of nonprofits. And the kind of things that the chamber is concerned about are the kind of things that most residents of Mountain View are concerned about.
Thank you. We're going to have time to squeeze in one question and just take one minute to answer this question. This is from a participant watching today, and they ask, "To help small business, to help prevent small businesses from closing, would you support phasing the minimum wage increase for next year?" Mayor, what's that with you?
I know this has come up, and I think it's definitely something to look at. As the person who led the minimum wage increase, I, you know, feel very strongly about how it has benefited many, many folks, especially in these times. And especially when 40% of minimum wage earners are single women or women with families. This is really important to me as we talk about equity and inclusion in these times as well. But certainly, I think, you know, I've heard many different reasons or many different issues in the, the, the high rents for commercial space is another one of them. I think, I think it's worth looking at everything. So I definitely would entertain a discussion about it. But I do feel very strongly that the minimum wage has helped many folks to, to be able to, to make it through this time. So I feel pretty strongly about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Jose?
Thank you. That's a great question. So I, I agree mostly with what Margaret Abicoga had mentioned. But I, I like to stress that the importance of being able to make ends meet is, is, is huge right now, especially when you look at working-class families and the missing mill. Right now, a lot of our underground economy is, is at a halt. We have a lot of parents in my neck of the woods on Lathan Street in between the 2711s, where mom can't work at a house where she used to. And where dad, who used to work in construction, can no longer do so because of the pandemic. So I think that when you tie into the issue of reassessing what works and what doesn't right now, that's a part of the conversation. But I'd like to stress, like Margaret mentioned, the impact of having that type of a level of income be secure when you have it, it does go a long way, especially when you're the one working for it at, at, at that time and when everything is so questionable right now because there are reduction of hours also that are happening. And, and that needs to be also thought about when we talk about these issues.
Thank you. John?
Thanks for the question. I do not support phasing the increase to the minimum wage. And the answer is simple. We have to look at our local economy and the cyclical nature it is. And the minimum wage is the necessary bulwark to keep the health of our residents and workers and keep cash flow flowing to them so they can make ends meet in this crucial time. If businesses are having trouble keeping up with the increase in minimum wage due to the effects of the pandemic, we can address that directly in other ways. I support an all of, all of the above strategy to support our small businesses, to keep them in place and operating when safe. That could be loans, grants, direct investment. It could be the direct purchasing of goods and services for distribution to our residents. There are ways that I will support our small business community without jeopardizing the health of our working class. The minimum wage is crucial to so many of our residents, and I don't think I will attack it in any way, even during the pandemic.
Thank you. Sally?
I would not support stalling out our minimum wage. I think it's critical for folks in, in Mountain View. And it's, it's well below what living wage is for our county. So it's really clear that people who are, are making even the increased minimum wage are having to rely on other supports. And so I would not support stalling that out. And I think that it's a bit of a symbolic issue because if you look around at the community, the, the help wanted signs that are out are for much more than the minimum wage. And it's hard to get workers right now. So I think that, as others have mentioned, we need to look at how else we can help the business community and really look at strengthening our relationship with the schools and with the community organizations to look at what families need during this very difficult time.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you. So talk of potentially phasing in the minimum wage kind of gives me pause here. And it's mostly because I do know, as others have mentioned, how important it is for folks who are struggling to earn the minimum wage that we have here in Mountain View to be able to support themselves and their families. And so it does, you know, make me really think about that. I, I think it's worth a discussion, but I also think it's worth a discussion to talk about anything else we could do to help our businesses. I know I've talked to the city manager about, are there other things we could do? She and I talked about the recently revisited business license fee. Is there anything we can do with property taxes? You know, perhaps there's a way to help in that regard. I, I just feel like sort of everything's on the table, but I'd like to explore everything and not just jump to the minimum wage. Thanks.
Yeah, I do not support that. I confess that I was part of the cabal, the Young Dems representative that went around the county helping boost the minimum wage back in 2015. My wife, Megan Fraley, also, you know, was the grassroots leader of that. So, you know, for personal and ideological reasons, no. But, you know, I am absolutely very much in favor of making life a lot easier for our small businesses. Again, along the lines of what Lisa was just saying, one of the things that I've been really trying to wrap my head around in the last few days here, like really intensely, is what I think are outrageous triple net leases, especially as we move forward into schools and communities' first potential future. We need to make sure that all the small businesses who's sitting, who are sitting on $3 million of, you know, valued property are not going to get severely impacted due to the passage of that. But even if it doesn't pass, I think that that is highly outrageous. I would love to explore controls against that. If anyone knows any commercial property lawyers, please send them my, my way. I want to talk to them. That's my answer.
Paul?
Thank you. These are certainly very unusual times and exceptional times. And so I think exceptional response is, is adequate. And I think something with the city could do and should explore is helping businesses pay that delta and pay that increase so that employees still get the increase in the minimum wage but are not hit immediately with that new cost on them. And so these are exceptional times. You may not do that policy in normal times. But, you know, the city can certainly afford, in very unusual times like this, to help provide that buffer against the increase in cost of an increase in minimum wage. Certainly, we want to make sure we're supporting those employees and doing everything we can, but we need to make sure the businesses get through this. And so if it takes a year or 18 months of supporting that delta and that increase in the minimum wage on the city's balance sheet, I think that is incredibly appropriate because of the such unusual time that we're in. Thank you.
Thank you. Kat?
Well, everybody has had some great things to say on this. And I, I think I concur primarily with Alex and John and Lisa. Basically, everything really should be on the table. We need to talk about it all. But I can't imagine that this would be one of the things we would go for. It just seems like it's such a small amount of money that we could make it up another way, as, as Paul suggested. I think what would, there are two major things that the city does to really help our vulnerable population. One is the CSFRA, the Rent Stabilization Program. We really need to protect that. The other is the minimum wage. These are the rocks, the rock programs that are the foundation for helping our vulnerable communities. We don't want to weaken them at all. We want to strengthen them. And I think we want to work hard to get more customers. And, um, I think we want to work hard to get more customers for our businesses, perhaps give them grants. Think of, ask them what they want us to do.
Thank you, Pat. And finally, Lenny?
The evidence is strong that the people most affected by the COVID-19 pandemic and the associated economic downturn are low income people, particularly people of color and immigrants. To punish them as a way to solve the problem is not the way to solve the problem. So I would oppose any delay in the, uh, cost of living increase in the minimum wage. In fact, in 2018, late in the year, uh, Mayor Abicoga had proposed agendizing, delaying the cost of living increase. Councilmember Maticek supported such an approach. I worked with our colleagues in Sunnyvale to make sure that the two cities would would continue with our higher than other cities' minimum wage. So I'm against it. And I agree with Sally. There aren't that, we need data, but there aren't many people, places that are even paying the minimum wage right now because people can't afford to live in Mountain View or nearby on a minimum wage.
Thank you. You know, we got so many great questions, and so I'm sorry we don't have time to answer more of them. I want to thank you all for your time and, um, thank you for your candidacy, and I am going to pass the floor to Peter.
Thank you, Sarah. And I too, of course, want to, uh, say I wish we had more time. There are so many, uh, complex issues, and these are indeed extraordinary times, but we must bring the forum to a close. As promised, questions entered into the Q and A box have been captured and will be forwarded to the candidates. In addition, we placed a link in the chat box to an earlier forum that focused more closely on some important issues that people wrote in about, such as housing and RV parking. I sincerely want to thank our candidates for their time today, their thoughtful responses and for their commitment to our city. I also want to thank the members of our community who tuned in today. I also want to give a special shout out to Sarah for her excellent moderation and to Courtney Bennett of the Chamber team for keeping everything running behind the scenes. We hope that this forum has helped inform you on where candidates stand on key business issues. And I encourage you to cast your vote in November. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.